Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole to order. Would the clerk please call the roll? It is eight forty-two.
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkins?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Okay, the first item is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. Is there a motion for approval?
Actually, the minutes for May seventeenth were not.
Oh.
For this meeting.
They weren't included.
So, yeah, they're not included, but you will get them very soon.
Okay, well, then we'll move on to item number three. I received two emails additions for agenda. Are there additions to the agenda, please? Let me know so that I can. Okay, Shandra?
Yes, I would like to add discussion of council priorities to the agenda, or at least discussion as to when we could have a discussion about council priorities, setting those goals.
Okay. Grace, did you, you had something to say also?
Oh, no, I'll second.
Oh, it's a, it's just adding, I don't think we have to vote on it, do we?
Oh, I didn't know if you needed a second for adding a discussion item.
Okay, so.
Never mind.
You, it was just Shandra, then?
Yes.
Okay, so maybe. At, I was gonna say after council input. Uh, Mayor Marlin, did you have one to say something?
I had another addition.
Okay, go ahead.
Staff report after public input and presentations.
Okay.
Just a very brief one.
And Shandra, maybe we can have that discussion during council input and communications?
Yes, that will be fine. Thank you.
So I'll just add that on there. Okay, we have a public input in. Presentations, we have three presentations tonight. Number one is Urbana Free Library regarding the budget review for FY twenty twenty-one and twenty-two. B is capital improvements plan, and C is our public input. So Celeste showed us here to discuss the budget review. Celeste?
Thank you very much, everyone. And Jason's going to put the brief presentation I have up on the screen for us. Thanks, Jason. So I'll talk briefly about the Urbana Free Library Fiscal Twenty-two Budget Presentation Budget, which is in the city's budget. Just as a quick overview, can you go back to the main screen? There we go, thanks. So in the twenty twenty calendar year, although we had COVID and we're close, we had COVID, we all had COVID, and we were closed a couple of months. Patrons still checked out over four hundred twenty-eight thousand physical items. Our circulation of electronic items like ebooks, audiobooks, music and movies was up eighty-seven percent, so a significant increase of almost eighty-eight thousand items. A hundred and twenty-three thousand five hundred people visited the library, and staff answered almost twenty-nine thousand reference questions. We added a new service called curbside delivery service, and we had eight thousand six hundred fifty-two people pick up their items curbside, and that's a service that we will continue to offer. It's been super popular. So just as we look at the things the library is doing, those are a couple of snapshots. We have a new infographic that lays these things out, which I will email to you later tonight or tomorrow. Probably tomorrow, I think you're probably going to be all set by the end of tonight. So Jason, could you take me to the next slide? Here is a high-level summary of the library revenue and expenses. We have three main categories. The eight oh twos are our general fund. The eight tens are our gifts that we have received. These are funds that stay with us, like many bank accounts. For example, donors have given us money for the fairy tale ball that we have every year. The Friends of the Urbana Free Library host book sales, and we sell their books at the library cafe, and that money stays in the eight tens as well. So this is money that we save and then spend as need be on the different gifts that the donors have designated it for. Then we have the eight twenties. The eight twenties is the revenue and expenses involved with the property that the library owns, the Weber Building, which is at the southwest corner of Race Street and Green Street. So we have these three separate revenue and expense lines. You can see that we are going into our fund balances very purposely for a couple of different reasons. We plan to renovate the circulation area when we finish up a building program project to learn more about what the community would like to see. We intend to move some of the DVD and CDs around to provide more spaces for people to be in the library. We might renovate the teen area as well, in part with donor money and with library money. We're going to repave the staff parking lot and address some building envelope issues. And what you see there is a chiller being replaced a few years ago with funds from the foundation. We also are going to be having a couple of staff people, at least one staff person retire, and that would have us take funds from our retirement health savings fund to pay her into her self-health savings program. We have some new revenue. This is very exciting. The library friends group has started an Amazon store and an Etsy store and is bringing in new revenue. So we are trying to be thoughtful about expenses and revenue and look to the future to be sustainable as our strategic plan talks about. We didn't spend all of the money from the fund balance with different projects this year, like the Friends have given us money to purchase new furniture for the front rooms, but not being open to the public, purchasing furniture for the front rooms was not our top priority. So that's something that we've rolled into the budget for next fiscal year, and the furniture, the comfy chairs are from when the library opened in two thousand and five. And I believe every person that has used them is looking forward to some new furniture in the front room. So I will invite you to come visit the new furniture when it arrives. So if we go to the next slide, Jason? This is to show you that the vast majority of the library's revenue comes from property taxes. It's eighty-three percent this year. It tends to run in that eighty, eighty-five percent. So what happens with property taxes is particularly important to our revenue. We work hard in those other areas, but property taxes dwarfs everything else. Next slide, Jason? So another area, our number two area of revenue is library fees, and that includes things like notary fees that we charge, people getting non-resident library cards, and of course fines, that's the biggest part of it. If you take a look at this, you can see that over about a ten-year period, the amount of fees has decreased, and these are, and this is in part because of the way people use the library has changed. For example, we saw an eighty-seven percent increase in use of the electronic items like ebooks. There are no fines and fees that come with ebooks. They return themselves, and so by default, you can never have an overdue, which is great for patrons. We want people to use the library and not be afraid of getting fines, which is an impediment to service and a barrier. The library board has deliberately looked for ways to get rid of these barriers. So for example, they've increased the number of renewals on items and extended the amount of time that some collections check out for. We have increased the amount of fines that you can have before you get blocked from ten dollars to twenty-five dollars. And people are not sent to a collection agency for, oh, fees till a hundred dollars. It used to be forty or fifty. So we are looking for ways to serve our public well, and that means in part less fines will come in because of decisions the board has made, as well as, again, the changing use of the public. Next slide. And so you can see here, the, the blue is fines, and you can see over the years fines have decreased. So this is a trend that we're seeing at other libraries as well. Some libraries across the country, including Los Angeles Public, Chicago Public, Champagne Public, Normal Public Library, they are not charging fines at all in order to decrease barriers. So the Urbana Free Library still does charge fines, but starting May this year, we have started the auto renewal service so that if your item can be renewed, because no one else has a hold on it, and it hasn't hit its maximum number of renewals, the system will automatically renewal, sorry, automatically renew, which will bring in a little bit of fine money, but will mostly open up the use of the library in a way that makes people more comfortable. Okay, next slide. Here's expenses. I've got two slides that show expenses. This shows graphically where most of the money is spent. So you see that Adult and Youth Services, which has a large staff, and purchases the materials that you check out, all the DVDs, telescopes, sewing machines, books, DVDs, and all those databases and downloadable items. Those are in Adult and Youth Services, which is gray. You'll see a dark blue sixty-five thousand line. That's the library cafe. The cafe has been closed during COVID. We will not reopen it until we know it will make money and make a profit. So that fund, those funds may or may not be spent this year, and that is neutral. So it is expenses and revenue are the same. So if we don't open it, that doesn't hurt the library. If we do open it, it's only because we know it won't hurt the library. It would only help. So the next slide shows percentages. So again, you can see that Adult and Youth Services is twenty-six percent of the total budget. The next line is going to be centralized costs. That's library health insurance, library insurance, and things like that. We have increased our spending in a couple of different areas, including facilities. We need to catch up on some deferred maintenance, as well as hire a facilities manager, and that's going to be an important part of keeping the building in a shape that's comfortable for and safe for people to use. And that is my last slide. The library board has approved a couple of different versions of the budget. The most current one, I believe, is in your, in your packet with the budget. There is a small budget amendment coming in tomorrow night to the library board. We were told just recently that we can expect a greater PPRT payment, which is wonderful. And so we put the extra PPRT matching expenses in facilities, building, maintenance and repair to match the extra expense, sorry, revenue and expenses will match, and that's where the money went. Also, we expect to have some roofing issues or otherwise dealt with the Weber Building. And so we are budgeting to spend the savings we've got for that building to address some building issues there. Otherwise, what the library board will approve, hopefully tomorrow night, is very much akin to what you've got in the budget.
Are there any questions for Celeste? Mary Alice?
Celeste, I appreciate you and the board trying to figure out ways to remove barriers. I think the electronic resources is great. I personally use them all the time. I, I did, I haven't been able to see the budget, library budget. I can't find it online, and I also did not see it in my packet. Maybe it just got missed in my particular packet. I don't know if other people saw it.
No, we didn't get it in our packet this week, as far as.
So I'm wondering, just so that we have an opportunity to look over, and I'm wondering if perhaps we should move this to city council with no recommendation, and then Phyllis, maybe you can give us a copy of the budget? Because I don't have any questions about the budget, because I haven't seen it.
You didn't pick it up from my office?
I, I did pick it up from your office, but it's not in my packet.
It wouldn't be, because you already have it.
Oh, you mean, you mean the big budget?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I was sick last time, and I didn't notice it was in the big budget. My, my bad.
Okay.
Also, just so, sorry, if I could, just to be very transparent, on our website, we have a page called Your Right to Know, and one of the links on Your Right to Know has a link to all the budget documents for the budgets going back several years. So if you're ever interested in where the library's budget is, that is a place that, that you as a citizen could check as well, citizen or a city council member.
Any other questions, Grace?
You, thanks for the presentation, and yeah, I appreciate what you guys are doing to reduce the fees to the public. I was wondering if you could share a little bit more about the community engagement aspect and teen hangout or cafe you mentioned?
Oh, a couple of different things. Yes, thank you so much. The teen area in the library is quite tiny. There are two booths and just a couple of ranges of books for the teens. And on Mondays through Fridays after school, we do a teen open lab, and we're, we take over the auditorium and make it a maker space, homework space for the kids. And then we also were using space that was the quiet glassed-in study room. So using a lot of the library's footprint to provide spaces for teens to come after school. So what we hope to do, once we hear more in the building program process about what's important to the, the board, the staff and the community, is maybe carve out some more space now. The collection space isn't big enough, and the physical space for the, the teens to be in is not large enough. So without an expansion, what can we do in the current building? It's something we're going to take a look at, once we've got some feedback from people. So soon, we'll have information on community focus groups, and I will email you that so you can share with your constituents, because we encourage people to register and participate in the focus groups. And we also have, tomorrow, we'll be putting up our website where people can provide written feedback as well, because some people don't care to participate in focus groups.
What's your participation for the teen area? Is my understanding that that's expanded recently? It was smaller before the pandemic? Like, do you have?
Oh, sorry.
Now?
Right now, the teen area is small, and it physically still is small. And before the pandemic, we were expanding it just after, for after-school hours. We were ebbing and flowing and taking over, like, again, a quiet reading room, which primarily was used by adults, and having it be a teen space, glassed doors right up front by the cafe where there was food, and with the glass doors, it kept it quiet for other library users as well. So we, we're using the building to its capacity to give teens space, but we want them to have, buy their collection of items more space as well. And I would be happy to give anyone a tour at any point in time as well, especially now that the building is more fully open.
Thank you. And with community engagement, I know you guys do a lot of, like, educational campaigns. Is that what a lot of the community engagement is focused on?
We do a lot of adult and youth, well, programming for all ages, and then we will be reaching out about the focus groups to get feedback in. So we do a lot of programming broadly, at different topics. But for this, we're going to be specifically asking about how is the building working well for you, and what is it missing for you? Does that answer your question?
Um.
Not as much.
Thinking about the budget piece, you have a six percent of the budget for community engagement. And I was wondering, is that?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's a department. It, sorry. We recently moved programming, which used to be an adult and youth service, out of that and put it with development and promotion, because promoting programs goes a lot with engaging the public and coming to the programs. So that is a department that does our development and promotion, as well as all our programs now.
Thank you.
And it's new, so I'm sorry, I forgot the name from it. I, that's silly.
I just want to add one, one more thing, Celeste, especially for the, the new members of the city council. Our strategic plan that we have for the, the library. It may, I think it would be a good idea if, if they all receive copies of that strategic plan so that they can see how we operate as far as prioritizing and how we do, do the funding and, you know, and how you actually do such good, a great, great job of operating the, the library.
Thank you. I'll make sure you all have a copy of that. And I should have said that first, because everything we do is geared towards meeting the pillars that the strategic plan has laid out.
Are there any more questions for Celeste?
Yes, Celeste, is the Maker Space operating in, over the summer on the same schedule?
They are doing it, they've been doing it online, and I believe we're looking to a fall, a fall launch for in-person programs in, in the building. That is what we're leaning towards. We're looking to see what happens with the state and such, but.
I was just going to say, if you're going to take a tour of how teens use the library, you definitely want to do it when they're in the auditorium and see what they're doing there, because my son spent most of his middle school and some of his high school time in there, and it's a great resource.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you, Celeste.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate your, your time and support.
Okay, thank you. All right, next, we have a capital improvement plan presentation, and Will and Carol?
I'm gonna kick it off and introduce Will and Tim Cowan, who are going to present the twenty twenty-one Capital Improvement Plan to you tonight. You know, we have been making great strides in making the CIP, which is what we affectionately call the Capital Improvement Plan, more accessible to the general public to increase its readability and transparency. And there's a, there's a lot of people, and they're, they're listed in the, in the documents, who, who assist on the technical side, both from public works and from finance. But the person who has really done the bulk of the work to, to, as I mentioned, enhance the readability and transparency of the CIP is Will Kolchowski. So I just want to acknowledge his hard work on that. Two years ago, we were, the, the transition that we made last year was from a document that was focused on funds, and, and it was, it was very much from a, a user perspective on the technical side. And then last year, we shifted and spent a lot of time creating project pages, which is the way the members of the general public think about it. And we, and in the presentation, we spent a lot of time talking about individual projects. This year, we're building on the foundation of all the master planning work that we've done. And, and this year, we're going to spend the bulk of the presentation talking about asset classes and how we invest in the replacement and maintenance of those asset classes. But I do want to say, too, there's a lot of slides. They were in your packet. And don't expect that, and I'm reminding Will and Tim not to do this, they, they're going to give you the, the headlines of, of some of those more detailed slides. But if you have questions tonight, we're happy to answer questions. And then next week, we have time set aside to do a deep dive in any of the projects that you would like us to. You, you know, you can ask us about that tonight and tee it up, or you can contact us, you know, during the week, and we'll be available to do that. But I, I also want to just take an opportunity real quick, before we dive into the slides, to, to just talk about Vision Zero, because we're getting some, you know, we're getting some questions about that. And I think there's a little bit of a misunderstanding about the city's support for Vision Zero. So although we don't have the, the resources to devote, you know, an individual staff to a discreet effort by BPAC to pursue a set of Vision Zero initiatives, we, there isn't a project on the major streets, projects in the CIP, in the transportation project book that doesn't advance safety from, you know, cyclist perspective or pedestrian perspective. And you'll see noted in there, and it's not for each and every one, but it's for most of them, where if, if there's, if the project is advancing a specific objective of the bicycle transportation plan, the pedestrian master plan, or the, what's called the Selected Crash Intersection Location, the SCIL report from twenty-eleven through twenty-fifteen, which is the most recent. You know, they, that, that is how we, we, that's embedded in our work. It's not a separate thing. We, we pursue those objectives as a part of our work. So once all of the transportation projects that are included in the CIP over the next five years are completed, all the high crash locations that are identified in the SCIL report will have been addressed, and those are both, that are in Urbana, because that's a county-wide thing, and those are signalized and unsignalized intersections. So in fact, the recently completed EMCOR project along Green Street and the soon-to-be-completed IDOC project along University Avenue are both real good examples of how, you know, the, the capital investments being made in Urbana are advancing cyclist and pedestrian safety. So, and again, you know, like many of the policy objectives that we have, we incorporate the values that are reflected in those objectives, like the Vision Zero Plan, in the prioritization of our resource allocations, rather than making separate resource allocations. It's incorporated into our work. So again, happy to answer any questions on the transportation projects or any of the individual projects next week, and we can answer questions about the overview slides this evening. So with that, I'll turn it over to, I think Will's got the first set of slides, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep, thanks, Carol. So before we get started, I kind of briefly want to talk about kind of what is the CIP for anyone who may or may not be familiar with it. So essentially, the CIP is a schedule that the city has to improve, replace, maintain, or build new city infrastructure assets. There's different types of asset classes, but mostly it's, you know, transportation-related, sewer-related, or public facilities. And we pay through these assets through five different dedicated funds that have their own revenue sources. So these are all separate from the general fund, is what we're paying for these projects. And Carol was talking about it. The CIP is project-based, so kind of, and, you know, the bulk of the CIP is essentially just the schedule of the projects as the funds allow us to do them. And how is it made? People are on the column to the right here. There's a lot of different folks with a lot of different expertise that helped inform the creation of the CIP from the public work side, engineering, the operations, who kind of see the things as they are. You know, some help from finance staff, and then Carol and myself. Then, you know, I don't know, and I'm not an engineer, so if any questions about the projects, they're definitely for Tim. In the process, I kind of like to think of it as a linear circle. Sometimes it's a very iterative process where we kind of go back and forth. But I think the major, you know, the three major blocks are kind of the data collection and analysis, the project creation, and then, you know, figuring out your financial constraints. And then kind of all that put together, you get the CIP. So today's presentation, we'll talk kind of mostly about the asset summaries, which is kind of parallels section, section two of full of CIP, which is online now. But before we do that, and then Carol's saying, we'll go pretty fast. There's a lot of information in the CIP. I think if we try to go through it all, it gets a little tedious. But we did attach, you know, the entire document in the packet, so, you know, we're ready for any questions if you have them. But before we go into the asset summaries, there are just a couple of main highlights that I kind of want to briefly touch over, just because I think they're kind of important enough before you kind of, the mind go, the mind goes numb with numbers. So the first one is, this was talked about when the budget was presented, but the equity and quality of life project. So this is a two-million-dollar project, which is, as of now, undefined, and I think so. Going forward, I think working with you guys to figure out what the parameters of this project is, I think, you know, the, the basis of it is that it's, there are infrastructures that are, you know, focused on these kind of high-value, maybe a little bit smaller cost projects, kind of in underserved areas to get, you know, some better quality of life. You know, I think the Kitch Street lighting project was the example used earlier, which that's a picture of. Kind of the other, another main point in the CIP, that's, I think, important to take note is, this is the first year that the CIP calls for the city to borrow some funds. The city hasn't borrowed funds for capital improvements, all that extensively in the past. I think the current bonds we have outstanding for, in the CIP are for Windsor Road. But over the next two years, we're scheduled to spend about ten million dollars on our facilities plan, and that's implementing the facilities master plan that we, gosh, I don't know how back, we started it, but we finished about two years ago. We started it last year. There's a couple of delays. So this is the first year, I think it's just shy of four million dollars that we're starting to spend. And, and that's really for a couple of main projects, replacing a couple of fire stations with new buildings, some design and improvements of the city building. And then there's a lot of different components of the public works facilities that are getting remodeled as well. I think just another quick point on this is that ten-million-dollar figure is from the Facilities Master Plan, which is our, they're very high-level estimates, kind of in kind. So as this first year, this upcoming fiscal year, as we're going through a lot of design for most of these projects, you know, those, I think there's going to be some variability in the final numbers as scopes kind of, you know, firms up and as engineering costs come in. So I, you know, I would expect those numbers, you know, for each project, kind of fluctuate a little bit as we get some real data. And then this is kind of what everybody thinks of, I think, in their first reaction to the CIP, is the big transportation projects, which you kind of see the four of them here. And I think this is just, you know, main slide is this, is that there's, you know, kind of talking about the prioritization method of how we do it. I think the, the major way we prioritize projects right now, kind of the primary factors are road classification, road condition, and safety issues, and that kind of drives the basis for most of the transportation projects. And then we have a lot of secondary factors, too, like project linking, bus routes, age. funding assistance, but those kind of top three things, so streets that are tierly roads that have, you know, decreasing pavement condition scores kind of get bumped up to the list or higher on the list. And kind of last main conceptual point to talk about before we get into the numbers is the other thing that we focused on this year is looking at our maintenance and kind of systematic capital improvement programs. And I think the main point behind all these new project lines or, you know, changing some money behind the project lines is try to be more proactive rather than reactive. So, you know, I think Tim will tell you, show you that you're kind of behind the eight ball, but when you're reactive, you end up paying more and have less effective outcomes. So we're trying to be a little bit more strategic, more forward-thinking in how we kind of have these smaller capital improvements or maintenance programs to try to be a little bit more effective. So with that, I think Tim is going to kind of go through kind of all the asset summaries, kind of give you a rundown of the numbers.
Yeah, thanks, everybody. So this year, one of our big things was really trying to just assess our situation as a whole and try to look at all of our assets, the life cycles of these things. You know, what kind of expenditures are we doing? And are we keeping up? You know, are we gaining or are we falling further behind? So I think if you want to look at the asset valuations, these are kind of high-level numbers that I worked on with our team to try to assess, you know, what makes sense for everything we own. So we developed these eight asset classes. We have better information on some than others. Pavement, we recently paid for a management system that came in and scanned our roads to kind of give us a report card of our roads. So we're in a better situation there than others, which is great, because as you can see, it's our highest valued asset, it's just under a half a billion dollars. But generally, this is just trying to give us an idea of, you know, how long should we expect these things to last? And then what kind of value is tied to these? Because, you know, generally speaking, we're not stockpiling this money waiting for a rainy day, or we haven't in the past. But some of this is seeing, kind of self-evaluating ourselves to see how we're doing and then see where we need to work on it. And, you know, again, these are very high-level. When you start looking at the number of assets we have and what we have, you know, the idea will be that this is going to be iterative and will be better in the future. But generally speaking, you know, that's kind of the overview of that. So if we look at, you can go to the next one. So we look at that as a whole, based on those life cycles of all of these assets and the cost to reconstruct them in today's dollars. The annual expenditures that we would be making to meet those assumptions would be just under about $15 million. And, you know, that says that, you know, at year 75, every bridge is getting replaced. And that year, you know, at 100 years, every sewer is getting replaced. Well, we have assets out there that are much older than that already. So we know that that's not exactly right, but we also have assets out there that we've replaced after 20 years, and we're hoping to get 40 years out of them. So generally speaking, from these, you know, these are just high-level estimates, but it's kind of a good target for us to kind of set ourselves up for, to compare what we're doing versus what we think we should be doing if these estimates are right. You can go to the next one, Will. So in talking about that, you know, what we're actually spending on our CIP, generally speaking, from FY '22 through '26, you know, we're averaging about 6.7 million. Treating the facilities is out of pocket, being as we're borrowing against that. But generally speaking, we're spending about half of what we should be spending on capital investment for these things. So we're using these things longer beyond their life, so the quality goes down. And ultimately, the sacrifice is level of service. You know, generally speaking, we look at that, and then we pair that with our operations and maintenance. And, you know, that should be kind of our total expenditures. And again, this is a pretty rudimentary number, this 1%, but we kind of gave it the sniff test, and we said, you know that, although each asset class might not be perfectly at 1%, this 1%, the 10 million here is in the ballpark for what we think this should be. And we compare, we take that 10 million with the 15 million we should be doing in capital improvements. That's about $25 million a year that we would be either investing in operations, maintenance, or replacement of these public infrastructure assets. If you want to go and go to the next one, Will. You know, this is what we are spending. So we take our operations budget, we take some of the maintenance programs that we're instituting in the CIP, and we're a lot closer to the right number here. You know, we're averaging, you know, probably eight and a half million dollars a year. And theoretically, we're saying we should be spending 10 and a half. So we're in a lot better position there as far as operations and maintenance, but we are still underfunding it, and ultimately, those things compound together. So if we are underspending on operations and maintenance, we're underspending on capital reinvestment, you know, the quality or the condition of our assets is declining, it's compounding every year. If we do less maintenance on things, we get less life out of them. But we're also on the other side, because we're not replacing these with realistic life cycles, we're extending the use of these facilities much beyond. And basically, it's not a sustainable setup. So we're trying to prompt that conversation, you know, address that, okay, we think that there may be an issue here. And, you know, some of that comes iteratively, year in, year out, when we revise our assumptions, to say, you know, does this make sense? Is this actually right? But generally speaking, if you look at it, we're, by doing less maintenance, things deteriorate faster, but by not replacing them on the lifecycle, we're using these well beyond their life. Basically, it gets to a point where we have assets that we just can't, we can't keep up with maintenance, and we can't afford to replace at some point if we don't start addressing this and kind of reversing the cycle on that. Go on to the next one, Will. So the revenues for these things, you know, and the things that pay for this, we've got general fund operations that pays for the operations crews and maintenance that we do on an annual basis. We've got the unrestricted CR&amp;I that kind of goes towards, you know, projects that generally don't have dedicated funds. We've got the bond proceeds that are specifically more for the facilities at this point, that again, don't have dedicated funds, motor fuel taxes, both state and local. We pursue state and federal grants if and when, you know, they're available, they're attainable. We have the sanitary sewer fund, we have the stormwater facilities fees, and all that goes into pay for all these different items of public infrastructure. On the line items for the state and federal grants, the ones that we target are typically related to our MPO status, the Metropolitan Planning Organization for Champagne-Urbana Urbanized Transportation Study. And these, this is money that is dedicated funding for our region. And then in, within that group, we work together to try to address the most, the highest regional needs with that funding. You know, as we go on, so essentially, the revenue sources, again, just to highlight a little bit there, you know, general fund, the MFT taxes, the grants, the bonds, the sewer benefit tax, the stormwater utility fee, and then what they pay for. You know, generally speaking, we've got some, you know, unfunded public infrastructure that, you know, we have to dig into our general funds for, or we're sacrificing the level of service that we perform these things. You know, we do have control over things like our local motor fuel tax, our sewer benefit tax, and our stormwater utility fee to try to make that shoe fit. So if we feel like we're underfunded in those locations, we can look at, you know, what can we do locally to try to help that? You know, in addition, obviously, trying to seek outside funding for all of these things as well. You know, ultimately, what this boils down to is we have a funding gap. You know, if we were to spend the, if we were spending 15 million CR&amp;I, 10 million in operations and maintenance, you know, we'd be spending about 25 million a year. On average, we're hitting about 14 million a year, which, you know, would indicate we have a funding gap of 11 million a year, which really, you know, again, these numbers are high-level estimates, but generally speaking, they're not so wrong that this is wrong. You know, maybe it's not 11 million, maybe it's 10 million. But generally speaking, if you look at this, we're about 56% funded if all of these estimates and assumptions are correct, which would indicate, you know, we're going to have declining conditions unless we change what we're doing. And that became evident in our pavement maintenance program this year as we ran some scenarios and said, okay, if we keep spending X amount of dollars on this every year, we watched our average roadway rating continue to drop a half point to a point of the pavement condition index, indicating that, you know, we need to kind of be looking at this stuff and try to plan to, you know, write this for the long haul. Some of the grant funds that come in, you know, the ARA funds and things like that are certainly helpful, but, you know, ultimately, this is, you know, a long-term goal to get it sustainably funded so that, you know, we're not waiting on the windfalls to come in. You know, they're always helpful, but we need to get, in my opinion, get to a point where we're a little bit more sustainable in how we're doing all of this. So kind of the next thing that we've included this year is individual asset summaries, so kind of looking at these more individually. And we don't have a ton of great data on all of these. This year, we're going to get better on that. Again, the pavement stuff is stuff, is the thing that we have the best handle on. The idea is that as we progress through this, we're going to get better data on all of these things so that, you know, the information is easier to follow. But Will, if you want to just go down to the pavement section, you know, we've got bridges, public facilities, everything's broken out here, but pavement's a good place to start, just because we do have dedicated funding for it, and we do have pretty good data on it. If you look at this, just graphically, you know, essentially, the red line is our dedicated revenue, which is from our local and state motor fuel tax funds or transportation grants. And generally speaking, you can see the trend line is that we have just enough money to pay for our maintenance, but capital improvements are really, you know, they get, we have to find a way to prioritize them with either subsidizing them with general funds, getting grants to pay for them, things like that. But, you know, in a perfect world, this red trend line would be, you know, a little bit higher up so that we were able to, you know, keep up with all of our operations, maintenance, and, you know, a portion of our capital improvements, if not all, you know, in a perfect world, obviously. You know, but generally speaking, I think the high-level view of our asset thing, our assets, individual asset summaries is, you know, we've got a number of assets that we just have no dedicated revenue. Technically, the local and state motor fuel tax can pay for roadways and sidewalks and traffic signals and streetlights, stormwater improvements, some urban canopy stuff. But generally speaking, it's not realistic for us to spend that money on those things when our roadway pavements are such a high-ticket, high-dollar item that we are also, you know, severely underfunded for. So typically speaking, the things that we have dedicated funding for is going to be our roadways, our sanitary sewers, and our storm sewers. And then outside of that, you know, everything else kind of becomes a compromise of either working to get general funds, prioritizing, you know, asset needs within that transportation division. You know, if we, if we come, get to a point where we have a bridge, you know, replacement, we're, we have a high-dollar item for a low footprint gain. You know, if we're replacing a 200-foot bridge for, you know, $2 million, it's, you know, cost per square foot of infrastructure is minimal. So, you know, I won't go through a lot of these in detail. We'll just kind of buzz through a couple more. You know, sidewalks and paths, you can see, generally speaking, we try to allocate some funds towards trying to keep our sidewalks, you know, functional, trying to address the biggest priorities and pitfalls first. But, you know, we're probably not on a sustainable cycle to really address everybody's needs and then address proactive needs at this point. You know, really, a lot of this becomes reactive because of the nature of, you know, no dedicated funding and, you know, trying to be realistic with the usage and, you know, trying to best fit the public as a whole. If you want to go on, Will. Sanitary sewers, you know, as you can see here, we have dedicated revenue. It shows us keeping up pretty well with the maintenance on sanitary sewers. It's a little bit askew because our capital improvements for sanitary sewers, we don't have, we haven't, we don't have all the greatest data now to really assess that. But generally speaking, my guess is as we get better data, we're going to see that we have some unfunded capital improvements that would be funded directly by this, and which would require us to look at our rates that are impacted by this, or, you know, do asks towards the CR&amp;I funds to help support that at some point. The storm sewer facilities, again, you can see, we're able to keep up with our maintenance pretty well on this, and this is another one. We did just, we have the Stormwater Master Plan has a pre-final copy has been delivered to us that is kind of looking at our stormwater facilities as a whole and doing an assessment of, you know, various things that we can do better and looking at our capital improvement needs there. I think generally, these two have kind of fallen by the wayside as far as addressing real capital improvement needs, because typically, they have such a long lifecycle of 100-plus years. So you don't see the deterioration in five or 10 years of an administration. You see it in 40 years. But generally speaking, we're going to get better data on that as well to kind of support if, if there are needs or funding gaps related directly to this. You can go to the next one. Urban canopy, you know, we're Tree City. And generally speaking, again, Arbor and Canopy, we don't have dedicated revenue for. So all this typically is coming out of the general fund to help sustain this type of stuff. You know, we have received some special grants and financial assistance from Silent Partners recently, which is fantastic. And, you know, the idea here is, you know, we want to continue this and looking at this as a sustainable asset. And I know right now, like one thing that comes up on Urban Canopy is kind of our target operations and maintenance. You know, we'd like to be doing routine pruning on like a seven-year cycle. And I think we're getting, we're closer to 12 to 13 years just based on, you know, financial constraints, staff constraints, things of that nature. But generally, looking at them as kind of an asset as well, because, you know, ultimately, they do provide a lot of environmental benefit. But we also have to be able to fund the operations, maintenance, and then removal or replacement of those as needed.
Did you want to go back to?
I think this is, no, I think we're okay. You know, sidewalks and paths, light signals, a lot of those are related to public transportation. Again, there, the dedicated funds for those are local and state motor fuel tax. Outside of that, it's always going to be an ask to either the general fund, the CR&amp;I fund, or, you know, pursuing grants to help support those things. And the hope will be next year, we'll have better individual asset summaries to paint a better picture of each one individually.
And so I'll take, back over just to finish up real quick. So Tim's kind of mentioned it, but, you know, before we go to questions, you know, there are things that we're doing in this upcoming year as part of the CIP to, you know, continually improve it. Carol touched on briefly how two CIPs ago, we really kind of flipped the script of how we organized it and how we thought about the CIP. And this year, we did the asset summaries, it's kind of the new deal. So going forward, the next year, this is kind of what Tim has been talking about, it's kind of, you know, take a push towards more strategic asset management and that kind of being proactive. You know, we have some new plans, we're collecting more data, but then taking that, those new plans and datas and, you know, utilizing that in an effective manner. And to try to, you know, I think, you know, when you're using the data, you can, you can ultimately decrease the maintenance cost and the capital cost over the, when you use it effectively over the lifecycle of an asset. So when we talk about the funding gap, you know, the more effective you are with how you do your kind of programs, you know, that's one way to help keep the cost down. And then at the flip side of that, which kind of Tim was talking about, is one thing we want to do over the next year is take another look at our rates for our local motor fuel tax, our sewer benefit, sewer benefit tax, and stormwater utility fee. So there's a lot of ways you can look at it, but I think, you know, the goal for us is to kind of look at, define what an acceptable level condition is. So when you have roads, you know, our pavement ranking condition, you know, you get 100 all the way down to zero, and, you know, there's, you know, there's not a single sweet spot, it's just, you know, the quality of level of service. So figuring out what we want that, you know, level of service to be, and then kind of backtracking from there, you know, how much does that cost? And what are the rates going to be? So that's something we want to explore in the upcoming year so that by the time we get to next year's CIP, you know, we can have some, you know, proposals for changes in rate if needed. So with that, that's kind of what we have for the presentation slides. But there's a whole lot in the CIP, so, you know, I think, or Carol saying, we're happy to take any questions now, or if there's, you know, things you want more detailed presentation on, we have a couple more weeks until the budget gets passed.
Okay, are there any questions for Will, Tim, Carol? Anybody?
Yeah, her hand up.
Grace? Grace? Oh, Jia?
Thanks. I have a couple of quick questions, which might be more related to this.
Thanks, I have a, a couple of quick questions, which might be more related to specifics. But one is I'm noticing, um, and it's come up a number of times today that there's two million for the equal projects, but in the budget, it says one million. Um, is that, are those two separate pieces? I just wanted clarification on that.
I think that, um, Elizabeth might have mentioned that when we did the overall budget presentation that
That was up there. Okay, there's, there's a lot in the budget.
It's two million dollars.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And, and then I remember there was a while ago that there was a discussion about um, the Lincoln and Springfield area, that part of the road that there might be funding from the federal government. How does that play into the, the project that's in this CIP?
Uh, basically, that was an earmark request that we, it just came up probably two months ago at this point, and they said, you know, calling anybody that has shovel-ready projects, you know, put your name in the hat, try to get this money. Uh, you know, with no guarantees to whether we're gonna get it or not. So right now, it's, it's in, in their budget, it's budgeted under our state motor fuel tax funds. If we are able to acquire funding, federal funding for that, that, those state motor fuel tax funds will be cycled into other projects into the future, and we'll, we'll use those federal earmarks if we're awarded it.
Yeah, thank you for that. Um, the other thing that's come up a couple of times is the Kent Street lighting project. Could we get um, information about how much that project costs, since we're, we're thinking about what some of those equal projects might be for the coming year?
We can get, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Tim.
If you know, you can tell, tell her, Carol. I, I'm really, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I thought it was, I thought Kent Street was a few hundred thousand dollars in lighting upgrades.
Yeah, between two twenty-five and two fifty.
Okay, yeah.
And that was for about, um, I think eleven or twelve streetlights.
Thanks.
Any more questions, Grace?
Thanks, I have a few questions and comments. I might, um, lay them all out and you can decide if there's any that are worth answering tonight or worth putting in the next deeper dive. Um, first wanted to say that I appreciate the work that you guys are doing with having a systemic prioritization, especially for roads and that other kind of infrastructure. I think that's really important. Um, I don't think we can continue with a complaint-based or companion, opinion-based kind of system of prioritizing. So I really like that, um, in the full CIP, we can see how you prioritize the different levels and some justification for that. Um, so I really appreciate that it's kind of more data-driven and has a system for prioritizing that is shared with us in the public. So I think that's great and I appreciate that, and I'd love to see more of it wherever possible. Um, I was wondering about some of the big-ticket projects, some of those roads. They seem like gateways to campus area to me, and I was just wondering if that was like part of the prioritization or consideration. I know that they have a separate kind of um boundary that they take care of. Um, and I would love to see some of the full data on the street conditions, if you're able to share that.
Sure. Just, just real quick overview on the uni- uh, the pathway to the university type stuff. I think that just is more of a happenstance that more cars use that arterial, so those, those is just naturally got, they, they get prioritized because there's, there's more users on it on, on an average day. Uh, both Lincoln and Florida see are two of the roads with our higher uh a- average annual daily traffic, so they get um, i- in our systematic uh decisions, you know, major safety impacts, uh roadway condition, but then also functional class, which really is tied to roadway usage and how many users do we have on this roadway? So I think those just kind of naturally, it, because there's a lot more users using those roads, uh, going to campus, um, they've just kind of bubbled up because of the number of users on them. Less, less so because of campus, more so because of the, the number of users, which I guess technically is linked because of campus.
Thank you. And I was also wondering about the urban canopy and wondering why there's no dedicated fund, even though we know that that's a consistent expense. And I was wondering, is it two hundred per tree per year that was the quote? In one of the slides, it was like two comma zero zero. I'm sure if it was two thousand or two hundred.
I, I think that's, I think that was two thousand, and you know, that, I think that, that number kind of shocked some people, but generally speaking, if we're just replacing a tree with a warranty and a contractor's doing it, we're probably more like five hundred dollars a tree, but we're trying to, when we do an asset valuation, we're looking at, you know, an in-kind replacement. It's unlikely that we're placing a twenty-year-old tree with a twenty-year-old tree. So we've kind of met somewhere in the middle on that. The, the, the asset valuation of a twenty-year-old tree is probably way more than two thousand dollars, but you know, trying to figure out a combination of what would we replace it with, but also what is it worth? And trying to figure out what, what number makes sense in between there.
Now, I was also wondering if the commissions were involved in this, like I saw that the B-PAC was, you know, one of the kind of organizations in a lot of the pavement projects, um, but I was wondering if any of the other commissions were involved in. I think in general, they, they could be utilized, you know, we have volunteers here willing to do the stuff in different fields of expertise and interest, and I was just wondering if they were involved in this.
So, one of the, as we've been evolving, so not, not, we have not directly engaged them, although they, they're, they, they are um, as, um, they have given the same opportunity as the, as the general public to comment on the, on the CIP. One of the goals that we have as we've been evolving the process is, um, I think we're doing, we did a better job, e- each year we do better, right? So we did a better job of, of incorporating more feedback from outside of Public Works this year internally, and we know we want to engage the boards and commissions. We also want to engage our um, y- you know, local taxing partners, so the Park District, and, and we did have one conversation with the Park District. Um, oh, this is probably like six months ago, just to kind of share in general what we're doing. But if we can, you know, do, do projects together, like if the school district is, um, rebuilding a school and we can do a road project at the same time, and maybe there's a park nearby, we can really leverage that. Um, and then we, we would actually like to do some public engagement, more public engagement than just this around the CIP, but it's all a function of, of having enough staff time. So I think after we get the CIP documentation where we want it, so it can just kind of roll forward, then we're, then we won't have that, that, um, that same level of staff time, um, committed to developing the CIP and the superstructure of it, and, and we can do more engagement across the board. That's a goal of ours. We, we haven't achieved it yet.
Thank you. And one more follow-up to that, then what opportunity did the public have to comment on this? Or are you saying that will be coming up?
Well, it, they, it was in the packet, so they'll, um, when they could have commented on it at the public hearing on the budget, because it's part of the budget, they can comment during public comment, um, for the next couple of meetings before you vote on it. So, and, or they can just give us feedback um, via email. But this, this is why we do the presentation.
Mary Alice. Um, so I, I really like the transportation project book. It's, it's a huge improvement from when I first came on city council. It's a lot more readable, it's a lot more understandable. Um, one thing that I noticed as we were talking about the roads, because that is such a huge uh, amount of, um, assets, is that in, um, in the road pavement, there's a reference to the current cities, the current code for roads that may not last for twenty years. Um, and I know the Savannah Green, I think the alleys were the ones that we were slated to try and fix, and especially since we just approved a new subdivision plat, I'm wondering if there's any discussion about updating that city code, so it can be reflective of the actual years that we think that those will, will last.
Um, I think, uh, Tim can probably, um, add something to this. I, you know, the subdivision, um, I don't know what they call it exactly, but the subdivision code and the, and they call it the manual of practice and, and CD. Um, that's been a work in progress for a while now, um, and we know that, that, that's an element of it, but another element of of what happened at Savannah Green and several other places was that we didn't, we were not, um, and this is as I understand it, since I wasn't here, but we were not diligent about um, verifying that the construction that was being done was to the standard, however, however, um, what I want to say, deficient that standard was. Um, we didn't even make sure that that standard was being met, and we have some very deficient roads that are, um, you know, w- we're seeing the, the results of it. So we didn't hold the developers accountable who were installing the roads, even to the standard that we now think is deficient. So it's, it was kind of a, you know, a con- confluence of bad bad behavior and bad, um, standards.
Yeah.
What is the, sorry, go ahead, Tim.
Just to add to that, the subdivision development code, you know, as we go through that, it's uh, a lot of developers will hang their hat on whatever the minimum requirements are. Um, you know, I think we're, we're looking, we have money in the budget this year to, from the engineering division to try to help work together with CD to work on updating these codes, so that they're more representative of, you know, two things, you know, what we should expect and also what we can afford to fund. Um, you know, if we're allowing roads to go in that can't last the service life in which we can afford to replace them, that's a problem.
Right, I mean, right now, we already have deferred, I'm gonna call it deferred maintenance, but really deferred replacement. Um, we don't want to continue to dig ourselves into a hole, so I guess I would say we need to update that as soon as possible, because every time something's built, it's built to the rules that we currently have on the books.
I, I do want to say one thing just for perspective, and it, and it's not in defense of what happened in the past, but um, if you look at the subdivisions and, you know, we don't have, other than Union Gardens, which didn't go forward, you know, we don't really have any new subdivisions going in, and the infrastructure and the road, the cost of installing the roads and the, and the utility infrastructure is a huge cost, and it's, um, it's really what has prevented some of the additional, um, build-out and, or, or subdivision, you know, actual plating and stuff in certain, in certain subdivisions, because they, they cannot, um, the, the, uh, cost for which they can sell the lots um, doesn't, um, doesn't account for the cost of installing the infrastructure. So there's this dynamic at work about the cost of the infrastructure and the standards that we set and the, and the market dynamic. So I just want, you know, to be fair, to give you that perspective.
So the, um, the, the area just south of, was it Myra Ridge, the one that we just passed, right? So that is, if they build that, that will go in under the existing subdivision code. That's the, that's the most recent one that we passed.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, James.
Yeah, and I realize this is probably more of a community development to comment now, because I was just, I was just staring, Mary Alice, at this, this sea of red for Savannah Green and those alleys. And I, I just sticks in my head that we, we would not make that choice now to support a subdivision like that, because I think of the stormwater management and, and all the things that go along with it. I know that, I know it was an experiment to some extent, it was being done in a couple of communities in, in the Midwest, but it, it, now it, it seems like a mistake, so I, I would, I, I would say that this is almost a, an element of, I would hope this would be an element of comprehensive planning to, to think about some of these things in the big picture as far as what, um, subdivisions in the future might look like and how we could manage that and, and not create rows and rows of alleys that, that could be installed in substandard way, even if it was installed in a standard way, it, it's a, I'm, I'm surprised that we're responsible for them. Right? I mean, they're, they're not really roadways, uh, they're, they're basically to serve the the people who live on the streets for, for access and garage. It's kind of like a, a community driveway, uh, more than a, than a roadway, so I just, I just hope we find a way to not, not do that in the future.
Shandra. You had a question, Shandra?
Yes, so you guys presented the data about the roads and how you finally gotten um, so, or some data and, and stuff around that. Is that possible to do that with sidewalks throughout Urbana too? So that we can start prioritizing fixing those as well?
Uh, generally depends on the technology. There, there's some technology out there and I, I just know about this because a former intern of mine is working on developing that technology at U of I to basically provide an affordable way to, the, usually the biggest problem is getting the information and getting it analyzed. So, you know, the time and the money that it takes to understand what all we have out there and the condition of it is immense. So that's why people like my former intern, uh, who's a grad student at U of I, is working on developing something that allows us to do that economically, because right now, um, sending somebody out to survey every stretch of sidewalk is not economical to, to do that. We could replace quite a bit of sidewalk for that. But if we could find a way to make that an economical solution, we could certainly look into it.
Um, just to add something, I'm sorry. Um, I believe that, that RPC did a sidewalk inventory, and it's not as granular as what, um, we were able to do with the, um, the, um, pavement. But, um, I can, I can forward everybody a, um, a link to the sidewalk inventory that is, does help inform um, where priorities should be set.
Uh, on the bottom of the individual asset summaries in section two, there should be links to data, so the sidewalk is there, and then the, the pavement condition. Um, there's a question about that earlier. You can go to see the pavement condition there as well. The pavement condition link is also on the, the CIP page on the website.
Uh, Mary Alice, could you take the chair for a moment?
Sure, the chair recognizes Charisse.
Thank you. Um, I guess a, a question that I have, there, there are a couple. Uh, because today when I was out, I saw USIC is something like US infrastructure consultants, I guess is what it is. Do, are they involved at all with the city, uh, doing anything as far as that, or is that, um, a federal issue, a federal thing?
US, USIC is actually a utility locating company. Um, people like Ameren, uh, Illinois American Private Utilities basically employ them to perform the Julie locates that are required for construction jobs.
Okay.
Um, they, they work for municipalities and stuff too, you know, uh, if, if it were ever the privy of the city, you know, we could employ them to go do our Julie locate, Julie locate, so.
Okay, I just, I just like, what are they, they're, they were just all over, um, my, my ward today looking, I was checking this, I, let me ask that question at the meeting. Um, the other thing is, um, earlier, one of, um, the people said something about, in public input, said something about cameras for, um, uh, certain areas where there seems to be an increase of, of gunfire. Would that fall under the CI, uh, CIP, uh, in, in, or in the, the capital? The, the infrastructure plans of Urbana? It could. I mean, we don't have that as an asset class at the moment, but, um, it could. The installation of that, um, i- is there, is there a way that that, um, something that, like that could be surveyed as to what would be the, the, um, you know, I, I know this is just, this was just a suggestion from in, in public input, but if we were to try to do something like that, um, is, is, uh, the cost of that, uh, insurmountable, or? I mean, you can see from, you can see from the, the, um, CIP that we already don't have enough money for the assets that we have, but it's a question of prioritization. Um, I think if it were the sense of the council that that was something that you wanted us to explore, we would. I mean, if it was, if it was just one or two people, that's a big investment of time on our part. Um, if it's not a serious, um, something, if not, if it's not something you seriously want to pursue. But, um, you know, if that's something the council wants us to pursue, um, we can do that. Okay, um, and that's basically, um, those are my questions right now. Okay.
Do you like the chair back, Charisse?
Yes, I would, Mary Alice.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other questions for Tim, William, or Carol? All right, thank you.
It's Charisse.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mayor Marlin.
I just was waiting for everyone to finish. Um, I just want to say I appreciate, um, council members who uh, recognized the, um, emphasis on data-informed decision-making with regard to this capital improvement plan, and that was very intentional over the past few years. We invested in um, assessing every mile of pavement in the city. We invested in the facilities, planning and space needs, space and programming needs assessment, and we invested in updating the stormwater master plan. So really, you know, for the first time in my entire experience as a council member or mayor, we actually have the data necessary to make as a council member or mayor, we actually have the data necessary to make decisions and set priorities and, um, have a rational reason for doing so. Um, and with, with regard to lights, I don't know if people know, but it, with cameras, um, there's, I'm told there are close to 3,000 cameras on the U of I campus, which includes a significant portion of the city of Urbana. Now, it's not the areas where you're, you're seeing gun violence, but the campus has made a huge investment in, uh, video cameras. And in fact, that's how they solved the, um, that was the break in the yin yang saying kidnapping was through those, those surveillance cameras. So there, there's a great deal of experience with cameras on campus. And that's a resource that also could be utilized if you, if you so desired. But anyway, I appreciate recognizing that data is now informing our capital improvement plan. And I think we're going to be much better at making decisions in terms of maintenance and replacement. So thank you.
Okay. So next is our public input. Thank you, Tim, Will, and, and Carol for that. Um, public input and if you have, uh, something that you'd like to contribute to the meeting, would you please raise your hand so that I can see? If there's anybody that would like to contribute and say anything. Okay. Reverend Underwood, or who did I hit? Arthur Paganini, I'm sorry. Arthur Paganini.
Yeah. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, actually, okay. Thanks, uh, for giving me time. This is going to, this should be very quick. Um, but earlier, I know that someone came on to the public comment arguing for, um, cameras. And I just wanted to express that I don't think that that would be a good idea. I know that, um, like cameras are seen as something about, um, like providing security. But I just think that realistically, there are things that can be, that money can be better spent on to reduce, to reduce these crimes in the first place. I think it's a very reactive solution that doesn't real, and not to mention that in the past few years, there has been like numerous stories about, um, these like, uh, camera companies. For example, I'm looking at an article right now, uh, from Ars Technica that police can get your Ring doorbell footage without a warrant. Report says, um, so yeah, I think that, um, one, it's one thing that cameras won't necessarily reduce crime. They won't necessarily make people safer. And the second thing is that we, um, is that cameras won't, um, like, we don't know who's going to be using, you know, if the police get to use these cameras, we don't know what the long-term effects of that are. I just wanted to express my, uh, the fact that I don't think that cameras are a good idea, um, in terms of community safety. That's all I have, have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Brandy McCoy.
Yeah, I just wanted to be back right off of that and just say that, um, I don't feel like putting cameras in, especially like specific targeted neighborhoods is how we're going to earn any sort of trust from the people who inhabit those neighborhoods. I know that, you know, um, you know, there is a safety concern with the violence that's going on in Urbana, but I just think that, um, we don't want to over-target people. You know what I mean? I don't want to like, especially areas that may already be considerably, uh, more considered over policed or something like that. Like we just don't need to be watching people, giving them a reason to be afraid or be distrustful. That was just what I wanted to throw in there.
Okay. Thank you, Brandy. Sarah Nixon. I'm trying to. There you go. Who's this? Oh.
Hello, City Council. Are you able to hear me?
Yeah.
Hello. Um, okay. Hi. Um, I was unable to, uh, follow the earlier part of the meeting and just logged on. So I hope my comment is relevant. Um, but I just wanted to, um, note that, that, uh, with regard to the proposed 2021, 2022 budget for Urbana, I noticed that community development in the budget has crept up to, I think, 13.4% of allocations where it almost matches the 14.4% assigned to the fire department, but is not close enough to the 18.9% of the budget allocated to the police department. So this is a gesture apparently in the right direction. I think the day that the community development budget matches the policing budget is the day we may start to see a real reduction in crime. But of course, what Urbana's marginalized communities and communities at risk, uh, for, uh, being impacted by crime, what those communities need is not salaries for more city bureaucrats, but large-scale funding and support for things like new entrepreneurs or entrepreneurship, business development, and of course, cultural, social and mental health, uh, and wellness resources. I, I am in no way, um, a financial expert, but even as a layperson, I'm looking at the document and wondering, where is one door in all of this? I don't think it's, I didn't see it anywhere. And it still feels like the one-door proposal and discourse has been empty promises, uh, made as part of a PR maneuver. At least that's how it resonates at this point. And also a colossal failure that, you know, not only in and of itself, but that this new proposed budget seems to be quietly shoving back under the rug. I, I think I noticed, um, a small, sort of almost stipend, um, assigned to, uh, crisis training, if that. Let's see, there's some funding assigned to a proposed co-responder for the police department for crisis response team, something to the tune of $35,000 to be allocated. But, but what is this new, uh, crisis response plan? And when do the people of Urbana get to hear the details as well? Where is domestic violence training and domestic violence, uh, professionals and services in this budget? Courage Connection cannot handle the volume of incidents, incidences and demand for services. We've seen that the DCFS, the Department of Child and Family Services and the Urbana Police Department are failing the children in, uh, family violence situations horrendously. And PR campaigns not backed up by, by, by fiscal commitment, um, are, are not solving anything. The budget reflects the city's values and what we see is that the neediest are left out in the cold, um, year after year. And, and here we are once again. So I, I, you know, I'm offering these, uh, criticisms or concerns to the, the council and the mayor as, as a concerned, uh, layperson slash community member. And I hope that you will take up these, uh, questions and concerns and look at them very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next is Alan Max Axelrod.
Uh, thank you. Uh, this comment is going to be hopefully brief, but you never know. So Champagne, Urbana is a union town. That is what we hear during Labor Day parades. I'm giving an open invite to the people in attendance who are available to demonstrate that. Because tomorrow at 10:00 AM, there is a press conference where a bunch of workers are going to be announcing their unionization drive. I'm not publicly disclosing this information, of course. So anybody interested in showing solidarity with workers in Champagne, Urbana to demonstrate substantially that Champagne, Urbana is a union town, reach out to me. I will admittedly be going to sleep right after this public comment so that I could drive to Springfield to pick up a YouTuber to bring to that press conference and then drive a roommate to work. So, you know, life. Uh, I did want to note, um, that the cahoots model for policing, uh, where behavioral health services are provided not as a co-responder model, but as a dedicated and independent model, is not only something that, um, has been a topic of conversation this past election cycle, but is something that was unanimously passed by the state house, unanimously passed by the state legislature, and is awaiting Governor Pritzker's signature. And even if he does not sign this, they have demonstrated that the resolve exists to override that veto. This would be a statewide integration of behavioral health into the response service for 911 to respond in some cases without the police. And it includes a specific prohibition on home rule municipalities from deviating from that. So maybe that's why one door isn't in the budget. I don't know. But I am encouraged to see that our state legislature has made a very bipartisan commitment to reducing the workload and therefore the stress of the police while also doing well by the most vulnerable in our community. Have a good night.
Thank you, Alan. Okay. And, or is there anyone else before I move on? Okay. So, uh, the next thing is ordinance number 2021.
Charisse.
Oh, sorry. What?
Staff report, staff report.
Oh, staff, I thought that was going to come at council input. Okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Just, just real quick. Um, I wanted to let folks know that all of the city council training sessions and presentations that were given over the past few months will be up on the city's website. Most likely tomorrow, they can be found at urbanaillinois.us/council-training. And I'll send that out to the council. This will include all the individual presentations made by the departments, the presentations on, um, tip districts and enterprise zones and that sort of thing, plus all the sessions that you attended with the Illinois Municipal League. So this will be available for council and, and more, just as importantly, for the public to access. Um, and it provides, as you know, an excellent overview of the city functions. And so these are all now, um, one place on the website at that, at that location that I gave you. So I'm really happy to report that. And for those.
Could you repeat the ad, the address again?
And for the public who tuned in, um, after the beginning of the meet, beginning of the first meeting, I wanted to let folks know that the city of Urbana has received the American Rescue Plan funds, the first allocation, and it totals $6,487,280. We now have those funds and I wanted to thank, um, the finance department, Elizabeth Hammond, her team, plus our grants manager, Sheila Dodd, for going through the process and, um, making that happen. So, so that will be included in fiscal year 22 budget. That's it. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. And, you know.
Ask a question on that?
Sure. Sure. Go ahead.
Um, I was wondering also about the presentation about, um, labor negotiations. If we were going to add that too, because I appreciate that these presentations for training are being shared for us and for the public. But there's one in closed session that was kind of like a background training about how labor stuff works without the specifics. And we had talked about doing that kind of a training for the public at a later time. I was wondering if we had a, um, a plan for that.
Well, we can't, um, release that particular presentation that was obtained, that was done in closed session. But, um, yeah, we can, we can work on getting, um, a general presentation on labor negotiations.
Yeah. Cause that's kind of my understanding that there was a request from us that we would like to have that same basic presentation in a public forum where it can be shared.
Yeah. Well, we focused on getting the, pulling together all the others first and getting those up there. And then, um, if hopefully we can find time to get that other one done too. But yeah, I haven't forgotten it. Just haven't gotten it done yet.
Any more questions for Mayor Marlin? Okay. Thank you. Um, moving on. We have ordinance number 2021 dash 06 dash 019 and ordinance amending Urbana zoning map, Europa House, 802 West Oregon Street, plan case number 22420M21. And this is coming to us from whom?
Cat.
Okay. Hi, Cat. Thank you.
Hi, guys. Um, this is a request by Chris Saunders on behalf of Tailwind Holdings LLC to rezone 802 West Oregon Street from R7 University Residential to R4 Medium Density Multiple Family Residential. Uh, staff finds that the request aligns with the comprehensive plan and satisfies the rezoning criteria. And at the May 20th, 21 meeting, the plan commission voted unanimously to forward the zoning map amendment requests to city council with a recommend, recommendation of approval. Uh, staff concurs. This is a location map of the property. Um, it was formerly known as the Europa House, located at the northwest corner of Oregon Street and Buzy Avenue. The existing building was originally built for apartments, uh, but it has been used as a dormitory through the University of Illinois Certified Housing Program until two years ago, when the previous owner opted out of that program. The building is currently vacant and cannot be rented unless the property is rezoned or if there is a change to the current zoning district, which is R7. This is a zoning map. Um, the property is currently zoned R7. And as you can see, the north half of the block is zoned R4. Um, this south half of the block is also zoned R7. Nearby are apartments, group homes, duplexes and single, single-family rentals. Um, and the applicant is requesting that the property is rezoned from R7 to R4, um, which is medium density, multiple fit, family residential, excuse me, uh, to allow the existing building to be renovated and rented as apartments. Um, apartments are not permitted in the R7 zoning district, but are allowed by right in the R4 zoning district. This is a future land use, a future land use map of the property. Um, and as you can see, the future land use designation is university residential as part of the Lincoln Buzy corridor. Uh, the requested rezoning would allow the existing building to be preserved and reused. And multifamily residential fits the intent of university residential designation. This is a, a screenshot from the comprehensive plan. Um, it's map eight, the future land use map. Prior to the point commission meeting, um, plenty staff and the applicant helped hosted a virtual meeting to discuss the requested rezoning. Uh, 10 people attended the meeting and the applicant answered questions about the planned improvements for the building. Uh, and there was also a discussion about the challenges of the R7 donate zoning district. Uh, staff is exploring potential changes to that zoning district that would make it easier for existing buildings to be renovated and reused. Here's some site photos of the existing building. Uh, the applicant has no plans to demolish the existing building or redevelop the property. The existing Europa House building has a floor area ratio of 1.75, which well exceeds the allowable FAR for any zoning district, um, or any. or any residential zoning district. And additionally, the floor area ratio, open space ratio, and yard requirements are the same for both the R7 and the R4 zoning districts. The applicant plans to renovate the existing building and install new flooring, countertops, and appliances. Here's another site photo. To summarize, staff found that the application meets the requirements for the requested rezoning. The proposed rezoning is compatible with the surrounding land uses and zoning districts and is compatible with the future land use designation. The R7 zoning district significantly limits the permitted uses for the property, and it has been vacant for over two years. The proposed rezoning would allow for the existing vacant building to be renovated and rented as apartments. So in rezoning cases, the city council has two options. You can either approve or deny the ordinance. Conditions cannot be applied to the approval or denial of a rezoning case. And at the May 20th, 2021 meeting, the Plan Commission voted unanimously to forward the case to City Council with a recommendation of approval. Staff concurs, and further recommends that the case be placed on the consent agenda. And the applicant is here to make a statement and answer any specific questions about the project. I can take any questions for staff as well.
Okay, so are there any questions for Kate? Cat? Mary Alice?
First, I want to say that Chris Saunders and the planning group did hold a neighborhood meeting. I'm really appreciative of that, and there were several people who attended. There is a typo in the memo that it was Ward 2, and it was me, so it should be Ward 1. I did have a question about the floor ratio. You said it was over what's allowed in R4. I know that the, the current owner doesn't have plans to demolish the building. I guess my question is, if that happened in the future, the, the fact that the floor area ratio is out of what we allow right now, whatever future building would have to either meet it or ask for a major zoning variance. Is that correct?
Yes, it would have to meet the requirements of the R4 zoning district.
Okay. So I mean, for, for other people to know, the, the university certified housing changed their rules, which is what made Europa House basically change ownership, to the best of my knowledge, which means that they had to offer meal plans, and there wasn't, there wasn't any room in this building to provide a cafeteria and so forth. So there really isn't any choice in the matter, because unless somebody decides to renovate and have a cafeteria, which I don't really foresee, a reuse of this building and basically re-converting it back to apartment seems appropriate to me. I guess the other question that I have, and it's just, I can't remember if, maybe Chris can answer this for us. Is the purpose to renovate it into two-bedroom apartments? Is that correct?
I believe so, but I'll let Chris answer that.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, thanks for the, Cat did a great job there, summarizing everything. But yeah, we're, we're not, the, the building already has two-bedroom apartments. We're actually leaving them exactly like they were previously, so it's, it ends up being 18 two-bedroom apartments. There's six on each floor. There is, we did renovate or in the process of renovating the old office space on floor one, which will, will be an actual three-bedroom apartment that was used as the former office. But we've been working on the, the property now for about six months. We've put, we'll put approximately a million dollars into it, but all those improvements have been really cosmetic in nature, the buildings structurally, and, and really good condition. And these include, you know, we, we pulled permits to add laundry units to every unit, you know, fiber internet. We've got plans to, to paint some of the outside decks and stuff that have peeling paint on them. But, but overall, most of the work, the, the inside layout's the same as it was in 1968 when it was built, so that didn't change.
All right. And then are you planning on renting this as a two-bedroom, or are you planning on renting this per bedroom?
Yeah, just as a, as a joint lease, two-bedroom apartment, so there's no, no room-by-room rentals here.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks for investing in this property. It's a nice building.
Oh, it's a really nice building. They did a, the previous owners took unbelievable care of it. We're, I'm so lucky to be able to step in the shoes of, of the building, and it's gonna be around for a long time, so we're, we're excited about it.
Okay. James?
Yeah, so, um, yeah, I, I think I, I would support this. I think it's a, a good return to use of what it was originally needed to be. I'm, I am curious, Cat, if there, what some of the other details of the R7 is, because I noticed that the other side of the street is labeled as R7, but those look like large houses that are being rented out without some kind of formal organization doing it, right? It's just, they've got rental signs in front of them. So when it's, when it's a university residence or dormitory residence hall implication, is, are there other aspects that the property has to meet to qualify to operate?
So, yeah, there are about six uses that are permitted by right in the R7 district. Buildings do not necessarily have to be used as a dormitory or be registered through the Illinois Housing Program. They can be used as rooming houses or boarding houses. And the zoning ordinance limits those uses to 15 bedrooms, but they have to have communal kitchen facilities. So that was kind of a stipulation with this case. While it was enrolled with the University of Illinois Housing Program, it was being used as a dormitory, but without that communal kitchen space, it could not be, continue to be used through that program, and it could not be converted to a rooming or boarding house.
I was gonna say that the buildings across the street look like they may have been fraternities or sororities at one point, but now they don't look like they are. They look like they're, they're something else. And I'm just curious if they have to meet a, a particular standard to continue to operate.
So they would be tied to their certificates of, certificates of occupancy. In that case, if they were formerly sororities or fraternities, they likely already have that communal kitchen space. And the rooming and boarding house designation would allow those bedrooms to be rented individually. However, the residents would be sharing that communal kitchen space. It's different from an apartment use where you typically have separate kitchen, kitchen spaces for those apartment uses in those rooming boarding houses, sororities, fraternities, and dormitories. It's one kitchen that serves all, all the units.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Chris?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Saunders, thank you for your investment in Urbana. I was just curious, what, have you been able to determine what a price point for your rent would be on this building?
Yeah, these, these are renting for approximately $1,250 a month total each apartment as of right now.
Is that it? Okay. Mary Alice?
Can make a motion if nobody else has any questions.
I was gonna ask if anyone wants to make a motion.
All right. I move that we send ordinance number 2021-06-019, ordinance amending the Urbana zoning map, Europa House at 802 West Oregon Street, Plan Case Number 2420M21, onto the consent agenda for the next city council meeting.
A second.
Okay. Mary Alice made a motion. James Quisenberry did the second. Any discussion? Okay, with no discussion, Ms. Clark, would you like to take the role, please? Ms. Phyllis? Do you like to call the roll for a vote, please?
I think she stepped out to the restroom. Shall I do it?
Okay.
Okay, I'm not going in any particular order, so, Grace Wilkins. Did you hear that?
I didn't hear anything.
Oh, sorry, yes.
James Quisenberry?
Yes.
Chandra Bishop?
Yes.
Christopher Evans?
Yes.
Mary Alice Wu?
Yes.
Jaya Colasetti?
Yes.
Sharice Hershey?
Yes.
And I don't know, does the mayor vote on this one?
No.
No? Okay, great. Motion passes.
Motion's, motion passes, and we'll move that on to city council for approval. Okay, next, because that was the only ordinance I'm trying to find my thing here. Okay, we have council input and communications. I think I want to, does anyone have any input first? Jaya? Oh, no, you just butchered. Okay, I'd like to have, I'd like to say something if I could. Mary Alice, could you take the chair?
Chair recognizes Sharice.
Thank you. Regarding, you know, the, it was someone that was talking about how, how having cameras is a bad thing. And I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna say this. I, I don't know that someone who doesn't live in my neighborhood has the right to actually tell me what's good or bad for my neighborhood or my area. And until you wake up in, in the middle of the night hearing gunshots at 2:30 or 4:30 in the morning, I'd, and no one wants to come forward and say who, even though there may be a bunch of people that know who, and people are too afraid to say anything because they're afraid they'll be retaliated on. We're not talking about overpolicing. We're not talking about surveillance, so to speak. There are plenty of people in our, in, in my area that, in my ward, that have ring phones and main, ring doorbells and so on and so forth. And one of the main reasons why we don't get a lot of information, and even sometimes when we do, when people do give information, they choose not to help because they are afraid of being retaliated on. And a camera doesn't lie if it sees somebody shooting somebody else. It's that plain and simple. So although I can appreciate the, the parental authority that you think you may want to pull over on, you know, you're just so worried about how we might respond to that, the fact of the matter is that it's people from, it's someone from the neighborhood that even brought up the idea. And I just want to make that comment before I take back the chair. Thank you very much.
All right, the chair's yours, Sharice.
Thank you.
Can I, can I make a motion to extend the meeting for till 10:35, just to give us enough time?
Yes, please make, well, we're gonna need, a little, can we do it till 10:45 maybe? Because we're gonna have it. Okay, go ahead.
All right, I move that we extend our meeting to 10:45 tonight.
Is there a second?
Second. I'll second.
Okay. Ms. Clark, would you please take the role?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes, and we'll be extending to 10:45. Anyone else that wishes to have any input from the city council? Any communications, anyone wants just to share? Okay, Chandra, you got the floor.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to bring up council priorities and the fact that we have not yet established any for, for our council. And so I wanted to, you know, suggest that we hold a special meeting just to talk about those things, especially as we are going to be funding things and spending art funds and such that, as that, we need to make sure we're sort of as a council on the, on the same page with what we want to see improved in our city. So I just wanted to be able to maybe pitch a suggestion of a date or a time. Or if that's, I don't know if that's something that, Phyllis, you pitch us dates and times to sort of not bump up against any commission or board meetings. I guess also, I guess also, how does everyone feel about that, having sort of a meeting of that as well?
Well, Mary Alice?
So last time, Chandra, I think, I think it was towards the end of year one in my first term, we had a facilitated conversation, and I know that Diane, you had mentioned that you were thinking of a different way to do that. So I wanted to hear your thoughts in terms of what, how we would run a council priorities meeting.
Well, it's complicated this year because of the ARP funding. And, you know, we, we need to have that conversation, which is gonna be a reflection of council priorities. So I, I see a lot of overlap between your traditional city council priorities or goal setting plus this discussion, overlapping with this discussion of the ARP funding and the neighborhood infrastructure equal projects. And I, I, I would recommend, just based on experience, that it be one process. And we focus on that this summer. It's, it's very, very early in the four-year term. It may feel like you've been here forever in terms of the amount of territory we've covered in the last month. But, but this is still very, very early in the four-year term, and typically, the council doesn't get those priorities set within the first month. I mean, it just has never happened. So, so the fact that we're gonna do the ARP priority setting and the equal infrastructure discussion, I think that is, that is council priorities right there, or it should be.
James?
Yeah, I, I agree with Chandra that we, we need to invest in this. I don't know, I, I'm afraid that the timing is not gonna be in time for our priorities to be reflected in this particular budget year, because I think I, I'm going to prefer to have a, I would prefer to have a lead facilitated discussion with a, with a, someone helping us with this as opposed to one of us leading it. And the reason why I say that is I, and, and I, I don't know, I haven't sat down with each of you and talked about how you take input from your part of the community, your ward. But I, I really think how this community feels is broader than the individuals that come and talk each week. And so I really want to invest some time in, in talking to people as their councilperson and taking their input to, not because I want to do exactly what Ward 7 wants to do, but because I need to hear all of how they're feeling about it before I start walking down a path of what, what path I'm gonna pursue. I just don't think we can look at, like, by the time we have to vote on a budget, getting a, a thoughtful facilitated session that sets out a goal that reflects what we can do or a four-year period. I know there's, there's a lot of urgency in a lot of areas that, that people are feeling, but I don't think rushing it is, is the right answer. I, I like the idea of doing it before we start figuring out how to spend this federal money. I think we have to lay some, some groundwork for that. And so if we can, if we can get an idea about how to do this and do it in July or August, that would be the kind of timeframe that I think would be possible and to do it intentionally with, with some facilitation help.
And that was, that was the thought on our end this summer.
Grace?
Um, I, I see the rationale to that, and, um, just throwing up the other side too, I think that we can definitely do both. To me, those seems like overlapping things, but also separate. I mean, our general values and goals, I think, doesn't have to be, you know, we come up with the council specifically, this, this, and this is our goals. But just a time for us to talk with each other, um, because we don't have that opportunity. Um, so just for us to share general goals and ideas, I think that is a more broad conversation and just kind of introductory level versus for me, the, um, ARP funding conversation seems like that needs to be a lot more focused and targeted. And, um, I don't think there's any harm in having a preliminary conversation just for the fact that we as seven council members can have a conversation together because we can't in any other platform. So I think it's important to have that preliminary conversation, and then some other general ones too, or focused ones about the ARP because there's a lot of things outside of that specific budget decision that it might be helpful for people to know our general goals and thoughts and where we'd like to see things go.
Hey, anyone else? Chandra, did you wanna respond or say?
Um, what Grace said was very much it, like, this is broad strokes, we're just talking about, um, in general, what we think the priorities are in the community, and then we, we meet more nuanced and, and, uh, more targeted and directed conversations about, you know, where exactly the money is going. But if we have, you know, sort of, if I don't know, you know, what the other six council members prioritize, then, you know, that sort of helps my suggestions and, and ideas as to, you know, what we could do on council. So i- it's just like Grace said, a conversation, it wasn't supposed to be, you know, we're putting, you know, this money here for this or that, it's just more so a broad conversation. But if you think it's, uh, go ahead.
If, or, Jaya?
I, I think that maybe there's a, a need for a point of clarification, because there, you know, there, there are the formal officially listed council pri- priorities. And I, I think that that might be kind of where, where folks who've been doing this longer are getting kind of in that mindset of like, okay, this is our official commitment to, to our priorities for the four years. What I'm hearing is more of a, a desire because many of us have never worked together before, many of us are, you know, just kind of getting into the swing of things to have that opportunity to say, there are major decisions that we are making, especially with American Rescue Plan funding, to have some sort of an open conversation because we, we need to have this open, openly, right? Not only because of the Open Meetings Act, but because I think we're all committed to transparency. So being able to have that conversation and say, you know, this is what I'm thinking, here are the needs that I'm hearing about. James, you're absolutely right. Of course, the folks who are engaged in public comment are not the only, um, members that we represent or the only members of our community that we're hearing from, but again, that's an opportunity to talk about what we are hearing. Um, so I, I think that's kind of what I'm hearing, it's almost like two different pieces that folks are talking about. And, and if I'm interpreting this wrong, someone else step in, please clarify, but I, I think it, again, it can be a both and, not a either or, that we can have a preliminary conversation, say, these are the things that I'm hearing folks talk about that are really important. These are the things I'd like us to keep in mind while we're looking at allocation of this money. And then as we move forward and continue to develop those more formalized structures, that there would still be that time. And I, I do agree with James as well, that I think having a facilitated conversation about setting those goals, those priorities for the four-year period, um, that, that I would anticipate that that would take a little bit more time.
Mia Marlin?
Well, it does sound like this is the preliminary conversation. I would, I would just, just a heads up, this is June seventh. The conversation would have to be scheduled around the, uh, scheduled board and commission meetings and taking into account UPT's, UPTV staff time, so it, it may, you know, I don't know, I don't know what the availability is at this point, so. But, but, but I think your approach is, is general conversation, um, what's kind of set the stage for the facilitated discussion that needs to take place.
Uh, go ahead, James.
I, I was gonna say, if, and if we're talking about, uh, a special meeting, and I, I'm sure people aren't gonna like this idea, but, uh, for something like this, I, I feel like something where uh, like the training we did on, on that Saturday, like that Saturday morning, timeframe would be a good place to do that. Where we're, we're fresh and, you know, the, the hours are not gonna roll by and, and start to wear on us. I, I do, I do like the, one of, and I promise, I, I, earlier I said I wouldn't do this very often, but I did miss the, I do miss the, 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 one of the things the county board had was, uh, in certain months where there was that extra uh, meeting date, that was an optional s- study session that, uh, things that needed a deeper dive that wouldn't fit into the regular calendar would fit into that. Um, I'm not suggesting we, we go there, but this feels like, uh, uh, an out-of-cycle, uh, set aside specifically focused, uh, kind of discussion, even if it is broad brush and not, not, you know, setting the plan like a strategic plan or something like that.
Mary Alice, could you take the chair again?
Sure, Chair recognizes Sharice.
Thank you. Um, I, I just wanna add to this. In the sense that I don't see any reason why we cannot have these discussions or a disc- this type of discussion during, for example, like, like we're discussing, having a discussion during the COW meetings. Uh, if, if, you know, something to that effect could just be put on an agenda for one of the, the COW meetings, for example, um, Chandra, when you do your COW meeting, you can add that to your agenda that you, you know, that you wanna discuss, uh, a particular subject, the ARP fund, funding or even, uh, have the discussion about, you know, where we do a roundtable of where, what we think our wards uh, prioritize of, if, if you're thinking about something like that, or, um, uh, what inputs you've been getting, and we can all kind of have that kind of discussion regarding uh, input that we've get, we've gotten from, uh, other people in our wards via email or whatever, and that, that might be helpful, I don't know. But when you, when you do your, when you do your COW meeting, you're allowed to uh, add what you want onto your, onto the agenda. So I just wanted to put that in there.
Oh, do you want the chair back, Sharice?
Yes, I do, Mary Alice, and I, the Chair recognizes Mary Alice Wu.
Yeah, I, and I, I understand, so it's pretty late right now, it's ten forty. Um, we wanna have a good, robust conversation, so adding it as a discussion item at the end, I think, might be challenging. So I think it would be good for us to look at what is on the docket, so to speak, in terms of seeing if we can identify a night that might not be, it take as long. Um, like, if we added it to tonight, it, we would not have time. And, um, the, the other thing I would just like to put out there is a, it is vacation time, and people are, are, you know, hopefully going to be going on vacation. I personally am gonna go on vacation for two weeks in July, so I, I think that we all need to be available and all need to be part of the conversation. So I'm not trying to make things too complicated, but I just wanted to kind of throw out those two items.
Jaya?
Just thinking, many of us were able to make the six o'clock, is that, I mean, it wouldn't be a deep dive, it would just be a, an introduction, but just wanna throw that out as another possibility of, you know, if we can't, because I, I hear what folks are saying, there's a lot, people are gonna be out, but at least taking that hour to have a, a surface level conversation. And maybe multiple weeks in a row, right, if we needed to, might be another option.
Um, Grace?
Um, yeah, I agree that, uh, special meeting would be good, um, just so that we're not all tired after a long meeting of other stuff, and we can really dedicate to it. I understand that scheduling might be difficult, but I think it's, um, definitely doable. And also wanted to add that with adding a discussion item, um, it doesn't have to be the, you know, the Chair adding it. Any council member can add a discussion item or anything to the agenda, um, with a second for city council. And so it doesn't have to be, you know, waiting for the meeting that we're chairing. Um, I'm, I think it's okay. But, oh yeah, sorry, just wanted to add it, throw that out there, um. And I, I'm okay with it being a discussion item, but I do think that a special meeting would just give us a little more dedicated time and mental space. Um, I think six PM would work on Monday or a different day of the week.
Well, I wasn't trying to imply that you had to wait for your meeting to talk about what you want to talk about. I was just saying that, and particularly if she, if she wanted to add that to her meeting, or if you wanna add it to yours, that is something that you can do. Okay, any, anything else? Anybody else?
So I mean, what, what's, what are we doing? Are we just gonna do it in July and August? What's the final thing here?
Um.
Or the consensus, it seems like it's very.
Mary Alice?
I'm just wondering if maybe the mayor and Phyllis could give us, uh, by next week, an idea if there's any meeting time that it would be convenient for us to add it to it, either adding it at six PM or, uh, to the agenda for a shorter agenda, if we have a shorter agenda planned, if you'd be able to do that so that we can make that decision.
Well, we're looking at, I can tell you, um, offhand, next week is a town board meeting in addition to the city council meeting, which is when you're gonna do the deep dive into the budget. And I'm also bringing staff appointments, and I can't recall offhand what the other agenda items are. So next week is a, at least a six thirty start, and probably should be a six o'clock start, given the volume on that agenda. So that leaves, um, that's the fourteenth, that leaves the twenty-first and the twenty-eighth as possibilities. So twenty-first is the next committee meeting, so we could look at that. But that's, and then we're out a month. Um, this is the busiest month of our fiscal year, June is. And then, and then the other thing to take into account, um, are staff vacations as well. I'm not sure how much that will impact this particular meeting, but, but our staff will be, will be taking much needed vacations over the summer as well. And if you do know, I would say to council members, if you do know when you're going to be out of town, um, on vacation this summer, please. I think Kate already sent around a note asking, but if you could please, if you haven't already provided your schedule for the summer, if you know it, please let us know, so we can schedule meetings, regular meetings around that as well. So we can look at, I would say we'll look at the twenty-first and twenty-eighth to see what the possibilities are. Otherwise, we'll be looking.
Five, do we need to extend the meeting, or do we feel like we can, do we feel like we have enough information?
I'm good. Anybody else? I guess then with no further business, uh, Chandra, was your question answered? I'm gonna ask that before, before I adjourn.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, with no further business before this count, uh, committee, uh, I adjourn. Good night, everybody.